My name is Mayor.
I got deposed by the DCI, by the Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. Welcome to the City Council meeting Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. We'll start with reading the roll, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Baranco?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Jensen? McCurus?
Here.
Nitzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here. All present tonight and accounted for their -- for our invocation night, we have Jerry Frog from the Yankton Sioux Tribe is going to do a smudging ceremony. Jerry?
In our tribal council meeting long ago, we offered tobacco to those who come to talk and discuss our argument. When we do this, we start to the west. The color is black and offer folks to have something to say. We turn to the north and we offer tobacco to those who come and have something to say. We turn to the east, which is yellow. We offer tobacco to those who have something to say. And finally, we turn to the south and offer tobacco to those who have something to say. Doing so, we have a smudging ceremony, which we burn sage. As a people, we burn sage for many things: weddings, birth, death, good meanings, clean means. It's actually a purifier. It brings up the real meaning of what people have to say. It brings up fairness to what they have to say. The meaning is what we need to get across today. It is a short ceremony, but it is meaningful. I would like to thank the city council for allowing me to speak for my people on this I enjoy doing it and I'd like to do it many more times. Oh, tito, viose. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Legions.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's move on to our consent -- approval of the consent agenda. Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull sub-items 1 and 19 from the consent agenda, item number 6.
Sub-items 1 and 19. Right. Any other additions, deletions?
Move approval?
Second call.
They moved in second. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That passes eight to zero. Now can we go on to our regular agenda, please?
Move approval?
Second call.
Any discussion on the regular agenda? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Thank you. That is approved eight to nothing. Before we continue with the regular agenda, I'd like to review public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During general public input portion of the meeting, comments will be no longer than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics which do not involve agenda items appearing earlier in the agenda, as comments will already have been taken on those items. Next item, please.
Items pulled from the consent agenda. Subitem 1 from Agenda Item 6, Health, Mary Cushion Consulting LLC, not to exceed original agreement amount of $29,400. And subitem 19 from Agenda Item 6, Health, Independent Contractor Agreement Coleman Associates, $58,870.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If it's okay, I'm going to ask Dr. Chima to discuss both items in one, and if we can, we can vote on them together. If the -- maybe that'll speed the process up. Good evening, Dr. Chima. Thanks for being here. Tell me a little bit about the consulting contract and why we're extending it. Obviously, it didn't get finished up in time. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes. Good evening, Council. Charles Chima, Public Health Director. So the first contract is just an extension with our funds, so the amount is not changing. We had a series of projects. We had a consultant working on, so started with helping us develop a strategic plan, community health improvement plan, and then there are additional plans of performance management and workforce development plan. So the timeline initially, we thought we were going to finish that work towards the latter part of the CA, but some of those are -- the workforce development plan in particular, it's a bit more extensive, so it requires a series of steps or things we need to do, and we think that work is going to go into next year. So this is to allow us to continue that work into next year, so nothing is changing in that contract. We just extend it with our funds.
That makes sense. And then, subitem 19, the independent contractor agreement with Coleman and Associates, that was one I wasn't familiar with, so.
So that's a new consulting agreement, and we may have a few coming down to council in a few months. So what's going on is we have a -- we have some funding from HERSA through, you know, extension of one of our upper grants that we have, and some of the things we are reaching into that grant is a series of consulting activities to help us improve efficiencies and process improvements in the clinic. So we're going to be drawing down some of those funds in the next few months to try and spend those grant funds and for the purposes for which we wrote them into the grant. So this is one of the projects we -- this is a group out of, I think they are based, I'm not sure if it's out of Montana, but it's really a group that is well-recognized in the community health center industry. They work with so many community health centers, including the Association of Health Centers in South Dakota, to really help health centers see how they can improve efficiencies when it comes to scheduling, making care accessible and convenient to patients in terms of availability of hours and use of technology and reaching out to patients and kind of managing chronic conditions. So there are a lot of resources that they do have, including development for leadership. We have a lot of new managers in the clinic that could benefit some of the trainings that they do provide, so that's what this contract is all about.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's all grant-funded.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll ask anyone from the public who wants to discuss this item. Counselors, do you have any questions, comments?
Move approval of subitem 1 and 19 from item 6.
Second, Starr.
They moved in second. Any discussion at this time? Seeing none, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That motion has passed eight to nothing. Next item, please.
Item 58 is a new 2022 retail wine license for Faux Thigh LLC, 230 South Phillips Avenue, Suite 104. 59 is a new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license, off-sale use only, for Neighborhood Market Company LLC, 4301 East 12th Street. Item 60 is a new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license and new 2022 retail wine license for Pansia Brewing Company LLC, Remedy Brewing Company, 611 West Avenue, with conditional use permit CU 1016975 2022, being approved on September 7th, 2022. Item 61 is a new 2022-23 retail malt beverage license for Randall's Kitchen LLC, Randall's Kitchen, 114 North Indiana Avenue. Item 62 is transfer of 2022-23 retail malt beverage license from Polk Picks Win LLC, 3412 South Western Avenue, to Appa Chicken LLC, 3412 South Western Avenue. Item 63 is new 2022 retail wine license for Appa Chicken LLC, 3412 South Western Avenue. Item 64 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Nyberg's Ace Hardware, 330 West 41st Street, for a special event on October 8th, 2022. Item 65 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Sanford Event Barn, 2510 East 54th Street North, for a dance on October 8th, 2022. 66 is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Rayfield's Gallery, 431 North Phillips Avenue, Lower Level, for a special event on October 13th, 2022. Item 67 is a special one-day liquor licenses for T-Slot Incorporated to be operated at Kirkaby Over Stadium, 2700 South Lake Avenue, for games on October 15th, 22nd, and November 5th, 2022. Item 68 is a special one-day liquor licenses for KJTLC to be operated at The Social, 301 South Thompson Avenue, for weddings on October 14th, 15th, and 29th, 2022. Item 69 is a special one-day wine license for Sioux Falls Lutheran Booster Club to be operated at 6715 South Bow Lane for a fundraiser on November 4th, 2022.
Thank you. Jamie?
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have on items 58 through 69, and I do need to request a motion to withdraw items 61 and 64 per applicant's requests.
Thank you. Any one from the public who wishes to speak on these items?
Speaking to neighbors at that shopping center, so we're going to go to item number We transfer of the malt beverage licensure. It's going to be the same owner. Right now, I'm going to tell you that I'm going to be putting the brakes on him, that he will not be opening for some period of time. We have some code violations and some health department violations. So I wanted you all to take into consideration that we have some -- I can't get into it publicly, but we got some concerns on number 62. So if y'all want to transfer the license, that's great, but he will sit with the business empty for quite some time. I want to inform everybody on these liquor licenses that when you do any kind of work that requires permits, that needs to be done before you can open up a establishment of alcohol, because that will stop you. And I don't know if the applicant's here, but there are some concerns of his neighbors that brought it to my attention in that shopping mall, and so I'm taking it upon myself. So if he wants to come after, then he can come after me. But I'm putting the brakes on him with the city on that. So you can go ahead and transfer the beverage license, but he will be sitting and won't open business for quite some time here.
Anyone else in the public who wishes to speak? Counselor Nitzert?
I will make a motion to withdraw items 61 and 64. Second, McCurus?
They moved in second. Any discussion on those? Let's take a vote.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That motion's passed eight to zero. Counselor Nitzert?
Make a motion to approve items 58 through 60, 62 and 63, and 65 through 69.
Second, Jensen.
They moved in second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That motion has passed eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 70 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 303 West 26th Street, from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 16976 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval. Private applicant Jesse Buck Miller.
Good evening, Council. Jason Bieber representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is Jesse Buck Miller. It's located at 303 West 26th Street. It's about .09 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to match the correct zoning with the current use of the property. It's a single-family house within a traditional district.
Thank you. Anyone from the public who wishes to address this item? Counselors, questions?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, McCurus.
Moved and seconded. I'll let you figure out who that was. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's get a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. The motion's passed eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 71 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 757608 South Hanson Place, from the AG Agricultural District to the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density and the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density, Districts number 16794 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to two. Private applicant Sayre Associates, Thad Roberts.
The applicant here is Thad Roberts. The owner is Jason Benson. It's located north of West 85th Street and east of South Tallgrass Avenue. It's just under 12 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking to construct two- and three-story apartment buildings on the lot. As indicated, the first reading of neighborhood meeting was held. We had roughly 20 residents from the adjacent neighbors come to that meeting. Concerns included drainage, traffic, and three-story apartments next to specifically the townhomes on the north side. The area that, in the southeast corner of this property, is actually looking to be purchased by the city for additional detention within the area. And then, some of the other things that we had were traffic concerns. With this development, when a new -- when they start constructing that, they will actually have to pave Hanson Place on the west side, which is currently a gravel road. The east half of that will have to be paved all the way from 85th Street to the north, where it's existing paved on the north side. And then they will also have 83rd Street, as you can see in the center of development, that will take traffic over to Beal Avenue, which is a major collector that runs between 69th and 85th Street. They also expressed concerns with three-story apartments, specifically along the north property line. The applicant did agree then to downzone that to RA1 and to only allow two-story apartments north of 83rd Street, to hopefully alleviate some of the concerns from the existing townhome people on the north side. And then finally, they will be required that level C buffer yard to those two existing single-family houses that are within the development. One is in the city, and then the one in the southwest corner is outside of city limits, but will still have that same protection. And just to give you an idea of 85th Street, we know that we are going to get an interchange about half a mile to the west. This street is upgraded to a four-lane divided highway all the way over to the interchange, and then they are projecting roughly 25,000 cars per day within the next 15 years on 85th Street, so it'll become a pretty busy, busy street intersection onto the interstate.
Thank you. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Start my timer here for five minutes. The one thing that.
Could you state your name, sir?
Oh, Craig Yoder, 26988, Cactus Place. I live in the addition just to the west. The big concern that is really overriding this whole project is paving Hanson Place. When that topic always comes up, Jason's reply is, "This is how we typically do things." And this project is not a typical city project. On the west side, that whole area is not in the city. It's just a rural community. We maintain the roads ourselves. On the plan, it calls for the developer to pave the eastern part of Hanson, and then the individuals that have their residents butting up against the west side of Hanson are responsible for paving that. Now, those people aren't -- whoops. Those people aren't in the city. They don't want the road to start with. So the big question is, why is Jason always saying, "This is how we typically do it"? This isn't really, like I said, a typical arrangement. It's not land that's in the city on all sides, so we have some concerns there. What I'm suggesting is that this committee postpone the decision today till the next meeting and allow Jason and Mr. Benson and representative from that community to the west to see if they can come up with a solution to this problem. I don't think two weeks is going to affect anything. Maybe Mr. Benson will be a little anxious. I did talk with him. I talked with Jason, and they answered a lot of my questions, but we need to kind of work on something here and get something that everybody is happy with. Nobody's going to be totally happy, but the -- we can get to a place where everybody can accept it, and that's what we should be after. Any questions from anybody?
Thank you. If we have questions, we'll call you back up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on this?
Hello. My name is Ryan Waybright. I live at 26987 Hanson Place, which is right at the southwest corner of where Hanson Place meets Sunnyview Place. So I want to give you a little context here. I moved into the property in 2018 with my wife and three kids. We moved to the area, as many of the residents of the neighborhood did, because there's a draw to the area. It's quiet, there's no low traffic, it's gravel roads, it's peaceful, and I feel like the way that we're creating this zoning and this property is going to jeopardize a lot of those traits of our neighborhood and really change the overall feel of our neighborhood. Three main issues I really wanted to express today that is consistent with a lot of my neighbors. The first is the 83rd Street connection. Now, when I moved into my property, there's -- and as currently sits, there's no connection from 83rd Street over to Sunnyview Place. This is a privately maintained road, and now the city -- or now the plans are suggesting that they're going to create a road that comes in and intersects and connects right into our private development. Now, as you know, there's not a lot of residents that live in our development today. This plan calls for up to 148 units, and this is a concept drawing, so it could be many more family units that live in this property, increasing the traffic through our development by 20, 30, 40 times or more, which of course is going to change our whole area. Secondly, is overall fit. So if you look at the overall feel of our neighborhood and our area, there's three-story apartments south of 85th Street, and there's three-story apartments at 69th and Beal. Other than that, there's not really any around our area. It's mainly single-family homes and townhomes. This feels a bit forced and squeezed, where you're trying to stick in major three-story apartments, two-story apartments, higher-density housing right in the middle of an area that's primarily residential and single-family homes. In fact, you have properties right here that are going to be completely surrounded by major apartment buildings. Now, is that really the vision of Sioux Falls? Is that anywhere where there's a spot of green grass that can be sold to developer and put up a major apartment building right next to single-family homes? I hope, I sure hope not. And then the last is something that Craig mentioned already, but cost and annexation. So what we're told is that we won't be forced to annex into the city, which is kind of what I believe to be for myself and for many of my neighbors, they don't want to be annexed into the city. But the developer is only going to pay for the eastern half of the upgrades to Hanson Place. So what does that leave? A half-developed road? How is that maintained? How is that -- how is that upgraded only halfway without having other funding from somewhere else? Unless residents from that area are being annexed into the city, I don't think there's going to be a way to force that we pay for an upgraded road that only needs to be in place because an apartment building and -- or several apartment buildings are going to be put in place there. So, you know, those are concerns on top of noise pollution, safety from traffic for children, reduced property values. All that's going to change. Now, I don't expect that the land's not going to be developed, so we're not asking for it not to be developed. We're asking for some sort of a compromise that overall fits our neighborhood better and kind of is consistent with the established residents around that area. So what I'm asking for is that we send this back to the Planning Commission, which only narrowly voted to move this forward at four to two, and look at lower-density housing in townhomes, single-family homes, other alternative access roads in and out of that area, and I think that would be something that would be much better fit and a better compromise to the surrounding area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item?
I'm Aaron Olson. I'm on 4738 85th Street, down on the corner there. So I've been there since September of 13. I've had construction going on nonstop, but whatever, that's beside the point. So what I'd like all you got to think about is, you walk out, you're back at your house on your deck, and look up and picture three-story apartment, the whole length of your property. I mean, how would you like that? I talked to my neighbor to the north of me there for the first time, maybe a couple, two, three weeks ago, and he's been there maybe seven years. And we're out there for a reason. You know? I don't know. You guys probably don't care, but it really sucks. Just might be able to think about that. I mean, really think about it. How would you feel about that? You know, we've had all this space, we've had all this freedom, and all of a sudden you're going to have this thing like shoved right up your back door, literally. Sorry, I'm not a very good speaker and I'm a little emotional. I just think it's very unfair, very unfair. And, you know, being country or in the colony or whatever, I might set up a racetrack in there. I don't know. I might see. But I don't think they're going to like that, living there and having a bunch of, you know, machines running around or lights going off, fireworks. I'm a friendly person, but you guys are putting me in a very awkward situation. That's how I feel. I feel attacked right now, and it sucks. That's all I got.
So let me say something clearly about this. As the city grows, not everybody can afford townhomes and affordable houses at $230,000 to $333,000. So I'm hearing, because my blood pressure's fixing to rise here, apartment buildings need to go up in every neighborhood. Wine-drinking neighborhoods and beer. Apartments, just because you have apartments doesn't mean that your crime's going to go up. It's how you manage it. I understand that people have homes in there and they don't want apartments, but you know what? Apartments needs to go up in neighborhoods. Again, not everybody, the city is not going to be based on corporate living, and everybody owns their homes. This is very ignorant, what I'm hearing. So if the developer, if it passes with the city and development happens, and thereby law of developing property, build it. And if you can build a skyscraper, do it to prove a point. So these developers, whoever's behind this, build it. Build a skyscraper. I want seven, 10 stories. Because in my area, I'm telling developers to build 15 and 20 stories, because people is against apartments. I want to set an example in neighborhoods. And that's what's going to come next year, especially in Pettigrew. Gets me sick to my stomach that these people back here is thinking that paranoia, that if they put apartments here, that the crime's going to rise. Crime's going to rise regardless. Transit and panhandling and people opening up your doors to check on your doors is going to happen anywheres. I don't care if it's a $20,000 or $150,000 to $400,000 or a $1.2 million project. It's going to happen. It's going to eventually happen in the southeast district. It's going to eventually happen on 91st and Louise Avenue. It's going to happen in gated communities in the rich areas of the city. This is what I got to say to these people, and I don't care if I'm cohorting or not. If they don't want apartments, sell your house and move out. Go somewhere else. We have Amazon coming here. These people cannot afford twin homes and condominiums. They're going to have to live in apartments.
Anyone else want to speak on this subject? Come forward. Come forward.
Deb Yoder, 26988 Cactus Place. Some of the points that I would make have already been brought up, so I would concur with the problems of traffic, of opening 83rd Street to Hanson Place, of connecting 83rd Street to Sunnyview and Cactus Place, which are the gravel roads that are privately maintained. I got emails today, people saying we're concerned about what happens on those roads and the additional traffic. They have said that what we would rather see, in spite of what some people feel, we would rather see single-family and smaller residences, which is in keeping with the aspect of that entire neighborhood, not just Sunnyview and Cactus and what is on Hanson currently. With respect to the additional homes and traffic, you also have additional children coming into the school district. I called Harrisburg and asked questions about how that will impact Explorer. I don't know if they are full, but I do know we just passed a bond issue to be building more elementary schools. So if you have 148 units, it's a pretty good bet that you're gonna have 40, 50, 60, maybe 70 school-aged kids coming in there. What is going to be the impact on that school with teacher-to-student ratio and class sizes? I've not heard anything addressed regarding the education in that area. Another thing is that when you, if you come through, if you put that many apartments in there and you come through and connect to Hanson Place and develop Hanson, annex it and develop it, then anybody that is contiguous on Hanson Place can annex, request to annex in. There are also homes along the northern border there on Bentwood's property. There are one, two, three homes, I believe, that are contiguous to the city, so they can annex in, and then the homes along 85th can annex in. So as that happens, basically, everybody could be annexed in based on contiguous boundaries. When that happens, the city is eventually going to give us city services. City services are going to be paid for by the property owners. Going back to 1999, when we asked the question originally, and I'm gonna use our property as an example because it's an easy one, I'm gonna use 150 front feet or linear feet on the front. In 1999, the price per, per front foot was $150, so in 1999, it would've cost us $22,500 for city services, which is curb and gutter, sewer, water, lights. In 2014, the price was $270, a, a linear foot. That would've been $40,500. Yesterday, engineering told me that the current price is $500 a linear foot. That means our property is $75,000 assessments. The city determines how I pay that back. They set either a 3, 5, 7, or 10-year payback. On a three-year, that's $25,000 a year, and it has to be paid prior to my paying my property taxes. On five years, it's $15,000, and on 10 years, it's $7,500. We talked about the impact on property values. If I go to sell my house and those assessments are sitting out there, waiting to be paid, that's gonna impact what I can sell my house for. If we haven't been assessed, haven't been annexed yet, or these assessments haven't come through so that they're on the record with the city, I think I still have to disclose them as a future possible assessment against the valuation of that property. So there's an economic impact that I'm asking you to at least consider what you're doing to us when you make these decisions. And basically, what I'm saying hinges on bringing 83rd through and connecting it to Hanson. At some point in time, we know that'll happen. At some point in time, Cactus Place will go through because Bentwood will develop everything north of us. But that could be five, 10, 15 years down the road. We've been there for over 25 years. So what I'm saying is, please, look at the overall picture, not just how many apartments can we put in that space? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this subject?
Good evening. My name is Trent Nelson. I live at 47125 Sunnyview Place. I am three houses west of Hanson Place on Sunnyview. My concern is, basically reiterate what my neighbors have stated. When we built our house 27 years ago, there wasn't a house between us and 69th Street. And obviously, development is great for everybody, but in this case, like my neighbors have said, we're concerned about our quality of life that we've known to love because of where we built, our safety and the value of our homes. The quality of life is that it's quiet out there and we don't have a lot of traffic. The safety is, the more people that come to the area, the more chances there are for, for crime to increase. And obviously, the value of our homes. We're concerned about the value. I personally maintain that road myself with my little tractor, and I do it at my own expense. And with the added traffic, that's just gonna become something that's not gonna be probably very attainable. So that's, that's a big concern is the added traffic. The value of the home is also very important to all of us. If adding multifamily, high-density apartment buildings that close to us, what's that gonna do to the value of our homes and, and the saleability of our homes? That's, that's our biggest concern. So I, I agree with my neighbors in that we can't stop development. I'm okay with development, but we'd sure like to see something similar to what we have now than to plot high-density residential housing right next to single-family homes. It seems like in most modern-day developments, you try to transition from single-family to low-density twin-home condos, maybe fourplexes, then you get into the higher-density, single-family residential, and then ultimately, commercial. And I guess we'd like to see that kind of same process go on here, instead of going from single-family on the west side of Hanson to high-density multifamily just a few feet away on the east side. I don't think that that's really an objective, or that's not the goal, I don't think, of city development. I don't think you'd see that in a planned development. Unfortunately, for everyone else that's trying to develop here and the people that are, that wanna make money by doing so, they weren't there 27 years ago when we built our house. Like I said, it was cornfields all around us. I never thought I'd be standing here today, 27 years later, concerned about what's being built just east of my house and what it could do to the value of my home. So with my neighbors' wishes in mind too, our wish would be that, is that they reconsider and only consider single-family homes and twin homes in that development and not pack in high-density, single, or residential housing because of the impact I think that that could have on our, our own properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this subject?
My name is Rod Wilson. I live at 269 Hanson Place. I guess one of my big concerns is, I'm gonna echo that of my neighbors', is safety. I have an autistic son who's 12 years old. When they put a retention pond in across the street, I was concerned about it. It, it's full of water constantly. It's 12 feet deep, I would guess, because their, kids are fishing out of it now. And I'm amazed that the city of Sioux Falls is on, the taxpayers on the hook for building a retention pond for this developer, for basically a lot that's been, I've maintained that road out there for over 30 years. I've seen water go through there 20 feet, 30 feet wide. So taxpayers gonna pay for that retention pond? How come if I put a pool in my backyard, I have to fence it? And yet, that's gonna be an open body of water that kids can fall into? I'm concerned about that. Also, traffic. Right now, Hanson Place says it's a private drive. It's posted a private drive. My wife's grandfather, at his own expense, put that road in. It's always been a private road. Lincoln County has never put one dime in any maintenance in any way, shape for, towards that. So I'm amazed that the city can then just annex half of it, as my neighbors have expressed, and the other half will not be done, which I'm perfectly fine with. I would just assume we gated off at 85th Street and have no access there whatsoever. That's where I'm at. And then the traffic. We have a, a school in the neighborhood. That's a lot of additional traffic that the developers claimed it was on 83rd, everything was gonna go off to the east. Well, we all know that that's not true. There's gonna be a lot of traffic that dumps in immediately to Hanson Place, and it's either gonna go north and south, most likely south, because that's gonna be in five years, there's gonna be access to the interstate. I also question why we stepped down the three-story apartments to the north, but we're not willing to do that and concede that for the other people that live in the neighborhood. Why is that? Why do we see that the, the need for the neighbors to the north, but not the other people who have lived in that neighborhood? That development has been there for almost 50 years. It's always been a private residential area. And while people and everyone in this group realizes the city of Sioux Falls is growing, but it should grow and take in some consideration, and obviously, we're not in the city limits, we're not part of, we don't have a right to vote on anything, we, we have a right to express our voice here, I guess, today, but it's residential. It's people's homes. And as people have expressed, they're used to a, living on acreages and a quality of life that is going to be completely eradicated if they put three-story apartment buildings in that area. The city, there's apartment buildings across the street, people understand that. It was an agricultural area, there were no housing, there was no housing in that area. That's not the case here. This is an existing neighborhood that's been there for almost 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Hello, my name's Catherine Riffle. I'm Sioux Falls here. I'm kinda concerned with all these buildings and everything that everybody's putting up. These apartments are not safe. Too much sex trafficking going on, bad landlords, et cetera. And if you're gonna stick a bunch of three-story apartments at this nice little area up here and then make the interstate come in on the side, what do you think that's gonna do with the area? It's gonna make it go downhill because those with the money are the ones that adorn sex trafficking, human trafficking, and we already know that Sioux Falls is a hub of that place. So why don't we make something decent instead of hurting another area? We've got so many places, north, southeast, and west here in Sioux Falls, that has been changed over the past years, and it's really terrible. I mean, there's nothing about Sioux Falls that was right. I mean, nothing. You change the water with the river, you know, you do this, you do that. Anyway, think of the people before you think of the builder. He can have money some other way, but this nonsense with apartments being unsafe and all. I myself just went into an apartment the other day, a, a building where I helped some people get out of harm's way. And I said to one of our state officials, when she wanted to ask, where are you taking these people? And I said, none of your business. And then the woman said, well, it is my business. I said, do you know where you're at? And she goes, yes. I goes, do you know where you're standing? She said, yes. I said, are you sure you know where you're at and where you're standing? I said, you're in a hub apartment complex of sex trafficking and, and cannibalism, et cetera, et cetera. Do your homework. Look at the people where our government has been coming from. Look at the apartments, how they fit into the play of the whole thing. We're not run by good Americans anymore. You can hardly even find a good American in up in the seats of Democrats, Republican, or whoever else. They come from other countries, dual citizenship, et cetera. They come in, throw apartments up, use the apartments as their, their workplace. I'm sick of it, you know? I did save these people out of the apartment complex and I got out of there, and when I look back, the apartment complex needs a lot of cleaning. Somebody's gotta go in and clean it up. And if you're gonna clean up the ones that are here already, then I'd say, go and build some new ones. But you gotta clean up what you got, you know? That's all I got to say on that.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Councillors, do you have questions for staff? Please come forward.
My name is Jason Benson. I'm with Bentwood Place, and we're the ones asking for the zoning change here. I guess I wanna address some of the misnomers of my neighbors over here. The, as far as Hanson Place is concerned, the developer, which is not gonna be me, by the way, I'm just, I'm not gonna be the end developer of this, I'm just the, the landowner. So the road, Hanson Place, half of it is gonna be put in by the developer, the other half is gonna be put in by the city and maintained by the city. And nobody on Hanson Place will be billed unless they choose to come inside the city limits, be annexed. And like the city said, they're not gonna force anybody into annexation. So that's only if they choose to annex will they be charged the, the fee for the road. And as far as 83rd Street there, that's the only way into the property, you know, as far as the, the city side is concerned. And there's gonna be a lighted access at, at Beal Avenue there, which also has a median cut, so a lot of traffic. If they need to go, you know, east or west, obviously, on 85th Street, then they'll be going to the, you know, the lightest, the lighted intersection. I could see, yeah, many people going down Hanson Place south onto 85th Street, heading towards the interstate. I would, yeah, I would believe that, that would be some traffic doing that as well. But let me talk a little bit as well as about the, what I call the Tallgrass 85th Street corridor. With the interchange coming in, this whole area is gonna be, you know, really developed and rather quickly. Across the street to the south, there's gonna be, you know, a pretty major apartment complex that's already being worked on right now. To the north of this neighborhood, there's already acres of live-work that's already zoned, and it will be developed as soon as Tallgrass is basically put in. Just to the east of this property, there are already apartments there. And then we also have developers waiting for the interchange to go in before they start building apartments in that area just to the west of, it'd be, I guess it'd be Tallgrass Avenue. So there's gonna be a lot of development, a lot of movement going on in this whole area surrounding this neighborhood here. 85th Street's gonna be a major, major corridor that's gonna go from T all the way to the, to the Iowa border, basically. So it's gonna be a major thoroughfare, as well as Highway 100 that's gonna be put in just to the south. So I just wanna give you a better idea, a better picture about what's be, gonna be going on in this area of the, of the city. Let's see. I guess, I guess if you have any questions, you can call me back up. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is the true last call for any more public input, seeing none. Councillors, do you have questions of staff? Councillor Knight, sir?
Yeah, this is, these are always interesting when we start running up into rural properties and rural subdivisions. So you have the collision of, of, of city and, and rural, it's tough. Jason, so there has been discussion, usually, it's generally right, if I'm a developer, I build my half of the road and then I either, the other guy might be on the other side, might be a developer, and we both agree, and we build the road at the same time. Sometimes I might build the whole road and then they pay me back later. There's a lot of ways this can be done. How is this one gonna be done?
The, the intent of this is for the developer, once this develops, to build their section of Hanson Place, and then the city would wanna annex it in, and we would wanna maintain that section.
So it would be, is this a collector? Would it be a collector or a local? Like, what would be the width be? 40 feet, 33 feet?
We, we would have to do a half, a half-section. I would just, I, I don't know if the right-of-way is all in there, obviously, because on the west side, it's a rural street. The east side, I would assume it'd be at least 66 and probably 80 because we're, we're abutting apartments up to it on the east side. Typically, then, those roads are wider to handle more traffic.
So 33, 33 or 40 would be the typical half-section of a local or collector? So somewhere in there? I mean...
Yeah, I would say it's probably gonna be, well, 66 is, 66 is a full, so 33 on one side, right?
Yeah.
And then depending on the amount of traffic, that projecting that it's, it's gonna handle, then we could go up to 80, where it'd be 40 on each side. But you're correct, when we run into development, when a developer's ready to develop, and then maybe on the west side, you have a farmer that's not ready to develop, that happens quite a bit. And so the developer then will construct half of that collector's street, and then when the next development comes in, then they would construct the other half, or they would sometimes pay the developer to construct it for them because it's cheaper to do it all at one time. This neighborhood is similar. If you think about it over in your neighborhood, I mean, Prairie Meadows is a similar instance. You got 41st and Ellis, that's starting to develop pretty big with commercial. You probably are gonna see that on 85th and, and Tallgrass. Obviously, we have that as a similar node, so you'll start seeing commercial on those corners. And then think about when you go to the east of those commercial areas on 41st Street, you know, from Ellis, you start seeing apartments fronting 41st Street. So it's a similar case where that rural subdivision was there. I mean, I don't live over there. I'm assuming most people probably take Grinnell, I don't know how many are going west over to Ellis Road. Most of the traffic here, I, as... Most of the traffic here, as Jason said, I would assume would go east or north, or if you went south, you can only go, it's a ride-in, ride-out, it's not a median, cutting the median. So otherwise, then you're going this way, and then up Tallgrass until the interchange comes in. So most of the traffic, I would assume, was going to go to the east.
This is named a place, but that's, it's rural, so I can't infer that, what it's going to be. If it was in the city, it would be, that'd mean it was private. Is this going to be a publicly dedicated right-of-way that we maintain?
We would have, yeah, if we would, we would need to make sure that it is not a private street that somebody else owns, but we're pretty sure that that's not the case. So it would be a public street, then, that we would maintain the one side of it. Because we would want that to be maintained, obviously, with our snowplows and things like that coming through there.
And as somebody who's on the annexation task force, that citizen was very much correct in that, the cost, and that's the struggle with these rural properties, is, you know, the typical single-family home in a city is 55 feet of frontage. These rural ones, many times, are like 150 feet. So I suspect that, you know, they may not ever annex, or they would annex under, after some sort of a sale and a redevelopment, but we're not in the business of forcing people to annex, so I suspect they may stay there a long time. But this is a tough one. I'm not sure what to do with this one, because it makes some sense when I look at the city development, but on the other side, it's a matter of how do you treat these, how do you treat these homes that were already there? So it, yeah, it's tough.
It's important to note, I mean, we're, they're, the neighbors are, keep indicating a high-density residential. I mean, with what this concept plan, you're showing 120 units on 12 acres, not including the city detention pond, so, you know, that's seven units an acre, that's roughly 6,000 square feet a unit. I mean, we build houses in the core area that are 5,000-square-foot lots, single families, so it's not super dense. And the reason for that is obviously the significant drainage that goes through the middle, that's going to have to continue to stay there.
To your point, I mean, the density is very small, there's actually a ton of impervious surface, which I don't, I don't like to see. But last question, it shows, this might be just misprint, 15-foot buffer yard for the three-story? That should be 30.
Yep, yep. The applicant's aware of that, they will have to have that level-C buffer yard, which is 30 feet for a three-story. So if they went down to a two-story, you'd actually be able to put it a lot closer, you could almost do 10 feet there.
That, that being said, I'm with that particular landowner, that even with that 30-foot buffer yard, we've seen them, it's not, it's not optimal to have a three-story apartment right behind your house. So, thanks.
Councillors, other questions? Councillor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason, you know, it's been said by a couple folks who've gotten up and talked tonight, you know, they're looking for some compromise. The way I understood it, the way you presented this, there's been some, but maybe just repeat to me again. I mean, obviously, tell me a little bit about the developer, what they've done a little different. I know it was going to be three stories, now it's two. What else did you mention that's been talked about, and concessions that have been made so far?
Well, the original, the original application was RA2 on all of that. The developer then agreed to do that north of 83rd Street as RA1, and as, as we know, then we kind of have a really good transition from the north. I get the west, it's an existing rural development, it's a little different, but from the north, we're going to have RD2 to RA1 to RA2 as you get along 85th Street. So you have that good transition for those aspects of it. I know a developer could come in there and build two-story. It's going to be pretty hard to get a three-story apartment in that area between those two single-family houses. It's just a tight little area there, so I don't even know if they'd be able to get a three-story apartment in there.
Okay. How many meetings, did you say there have been between the neighborhood and city, and how many?
We had the neighborhood meeting out there on August 17th, so that was, that was the meeting, and then after that, so I spoke with the developer and asked him if he would be willing to take the RA, or the north part to RA1 for that better transition aspect of it. But I think the concern, the big concern with him, and I don't want to speak for him, is when you don't have a lot of density on here, because you don't have a lot of space to build, you got to go up a little bit to be able to get the number of units to make, to make the numbers work on the specific parcel. With that significant drainage area, there's just not a lot of room to put four, five, maybe more, more apartment buildings that are two-story instead of three-story.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Councillor Bronco?
One of the suggestions that was made this evening was for us to hold off on deciding to give a greater opportunity for people to speak together, maybe forge more mutually acceptable compromise. Is that something that's been talked about, discussed? Is that on the table?
I heard from one of the neighbors today, and I know he called Jason, the applicant, I'm not sure what his thoughts are on deferring it for any more compromise. I'm not sure that he would be willing to go down much more, because like I said, when you've got all those, those single-family houses and all that drainage, it's just, it's hard for it to pencil out, for somebody to be able to purchase it and make it work with 120 units on 12 acres, it just becomes difficult.
No, I understand that, but I, it's my understanding that that's not the only issue. So it sounded like maybe there were some other areas where compromise was still possible, and I was wondering whether it would be wise for the city to delay this, or whether you feel that that is not a practical solution.
We can definitely ask the applicant that. I guess that would be up to him, if he's willing to do that. I'm not sure what other compromise that the neighbor said that, that didn't include doing single-family or townhomes on the specific one. Because I don't think, there's no other access points out of this neighborhood, or this parcel, we can't get anything else onto 85th Street, because that's limited access arterial street. So we can't have anything come into the south, so there's really not any other access ways that we can come out of here and not use Hanson Place with anything. I mean, even if it was single-family, they'd still have to exit on Hanson Place as part of that development.
Councillor McCarras?
Thank you, thank you, Jason. Can you just clarify, I apologize if I missed this or misunderstood, with where we're at with the city ownership in regards to the drainage area? The city intends to buy that? The city has that in contract? I just want to make sure, I've heard the word intend.
No, we intend to buy that, it's not included in the rezoning, so that's part of, if you look at this map here, that's part of Mr. Benson's property that he owns, so we're not rezoning that at this time, because the city does intend to buy it, and then obviously, we would rezone it something other than apartments. So I don't believe, we've come to a number on that aspect of it, but that's the intent is to buy, buy that area for some additional drainage.
I just want to clarify a little bit, and sorry if I'm, I've been down, or we've been down this path a couple of times, where we've had situations, we've heard intend, we intend to put this drainage thing in back here, and then everything gets built, and next thing you know, we've got drainage issues in the, in the home thing. So how do we strengthen it from intend to this will be done if this development?
Well, it's important to note that this drainage pond that the city's looking to purchase is actually taking the drainage from the south. The struggles with this neighborhood is the development to the south doesn't have enough drainage, so the drainage runs to the north. So from this pond, then you can see it's running to the north, so it's really taking everything that's on the south side of 85th Street for additional storage for the city within that area to go forward, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? We get a motion, more questions?
Just one more. Can you reiterate one more time, the total number of acres, the total number of units, and give me a comparison to something else?
I've got 11.71 acres for the area on this plan here, I believe, if you guys can see it. So that's not including the city detention area, and then around 120 acres, or, excuse me, units, I think they're showing on these buildings. So you can see it's not, I mean, look at the development to the east, I mean, that's all pavement and buildings, this is a lot less dense than the development to the east, and that's actually two-story buildings to the east.
I'm trying, so that's like, what, 10 units an acre?
It's probably less than that. So 12 acres by 120 units is about nine units an acre.
Oh, and single-family would be what, about six? Because I think .16 acres, give or take, about six housing units?
You usually get four or five, probably, on suburban lots. In the core, you'd get a lot more than that, obviously, but we'd be at like 5,000 square foot in the core. But a standard lot out here, I would say, is like 60 by 120, so 7,200 square feet. So that's what, six, six units, seven units? It's not a whole bunch more.
Okay, thanks.
Move of approval, Jensen.
Second, Selberg.
A motion to approve by Jensen, second by Selberg. Discussion? Councillor McCarras?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's two comments I'd like to make. First, I, I'm really struggling with the commentary about safety in regards to apartments. We've got a commentary happening throughout our community that apartment buildings equate to further crime. We've got law-abiding citizens that live in apartments, we've got law-abiding citizens that live in single-family homes, we've got idiots that live in apartments, we've got idiots that live in single-family homes. I think we've got to be really careful that we do not project to our community, and to those who are coming to our community, that just because you live in an apartment complex, there's an assumption that you're more irresponsible, or you're living with a different class of citizen. And so I don't think it's appropriate for us to base a decision off of this, off of that type of commentary. When I look at this type of decision, I want to look at factual things, such as, what's the drainage impact on the neighboring properties? What's the traffic impact on the neighboring properties? And so that's what I want to look at in this. I do not see factual information that tells me that those who are going to live in these apartment developments, or have been living in these department developments, are more unsafe than people who would be living in a single-family area here. So I just want to encourage us to keep those things in mind as we consider this.
Other comments? Councillor Cole?
Thank you. I would be inclined to defer to October 17th, so that those further questions, that that conversation could take place and provide a little bit more clarity.
Second, Starr.
Motion to amend by moving it to October 17th. Discussion?
Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Starr?
I guess the thing that is important to me, I'm not sure a deferral is going to get the residents and the developer any closer to where they're at at this point, but I'm sure willing to spend the two weeks to give them that opportunity. I would like the developer, in that two weeks, to take the time to sit down and have another public meeting. You can never have too many public meetings. And for the developer to really sell his idea to the neighborhood, or them to sell their idea, and at least make it a little more understandable, maybe a little more palatable, I, I'm not sure that much will happen in two weeks, but I sure expect that to happen, and I think that's the, one more meeting sure wouldn't hurt anything, especially this time of the year. I don't think it pushes the timeline for the development back any, with winter coming on, and some of the things getting ready for spring, and the time that it takes. So I'd sure encourage you to support, giving them another chance to at least be heard.
Other comments, councillors? Can we get a vote on the substitute motion to move the, to defer till October 17?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen? Maro, Maro, Marcurus?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That motion's passed, seven to one. Next item, please.
Item 72 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway, from the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District to the RCD Residential Cluster Development PUD, RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional Districts, number 16957, 2022, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero. Private applicants, Nielsen Development LLC, Kelly Nielsen.
The applicant and owner here is Kelly Nielsen. This is located north of East Madison Street and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about 9.7 acres in size. This is our, the request is to construct an accessible housing subdivision, as we've seen before, with about 39 single-family homes ranging in size from 978 square feet to 1,200 square feet. And then each home will have a single-stall garage and a 20-foot-wide driveway, and then to the south and the west, they will construct some twin homes at roughly 1,100 square feet, and include two bedrooms, two bath on the main level, and then an unfinished basement. Goals for that purchase price were $232,000 for the 978-square-foot, and $308,000 for the 1,200-square-foot single-family houses. And then they're looking to target the twin homes for around $323,000. The applicant, as indicated before, they're looking to bring that TIF application in front of you guys, I believe, either in the next two weeks or so, to do that aspect of it, and then the development agreement with the developer. But this is kind of a rendering of what the neighborhood could look like, once it's built out.
Thank you. Anyone from public wish to speak on this?
Hello, council? Brian Burge out of Beersford, South Dakota. Reason I'm calling here today is, what happens in Sioux Falls affects outlying districts, which mine would be one of them. And I feel that Sioux Falls is making a historic mistake, mistake that lasts for 100-plus years. And if you reference back to why I say historic, pulled up a plat map from when the Milwaukee Railroad came through and platted South Dakota, they made this into 50-foot-wide lots. Almost all those plattings in my town are obsolete, they've been vacated away. We're going 10-foot narrower, at which point, the dimensions of this room, if squared off, is the entire size of the entire property with setback. So put an entire family in here, park your car in your front yard, and not have any room on the street barely to park. Historically, I've had an interesting intersection in my careers, I've spent five years in the garage door business, so I've seen what people put in their garage. Single car garage in America will not fit a car in it, especially if you don't have any storage in it. At which point, I've also done three years in the tree care business. I've had to get equipment and take out five-foot trees in backyards. 14-foot backyard or five-foot side yards, it's going to be a real pain when you allow fencing to get put in here. Beyond that, we're also saying, we're going to allow the driveway to be wider, so you can park in your front yard. So go ahead and put your extra vehicle that doesn't run in the front yard, don't put anything in the garage, that's already full. And my service truck with trailer, sort of 40 feet, you go 40-foot pitch between properties, take out a 14-foot driveway, leaves you 26 feet between them, you better fit a crew cab pickup in there. We are shoving people into densities that will cause problems for years. South Dakota, on average, has a density of about 11 people per square mile. This plating here puts you up at 22,000 per square mile if you do four people per home. Do not social engineer the future of this town for years, and therefore, the environment of the communities around it, by allowing this high density, which allows for very poor service access, very poor social conditions, almost no exposure to yards, at a price tag of about $2.6 million retail value per acre. Are we going to allow pure greed to drive our, how we develop our towns and our communities? Are we going to let Sioux Falls become the Omaha of South Dakota, to where it dictates everything that happens the rest of the state? Be very careful with how tightly dense you are, particularly when you have historic patterns, where we prove that plating of this nature causes problems. So much so, that those problems of overcrowding and density, and obsolete plating, in this 1978, we made a chunk of codified law to go through and clean up those areas, called slums, due to their overcrowding, the problems they created. In 1978, we created a program where we allow for tax increment financing districts to allow for slums to be dissolved, where we have to tell, what are we going to do with the residents that are living in those slums? Are we setting the stage to create some of this in the future? The plating I sure see here sure says so, at which point, not just Sioux Falls has to deal with this, but all the outlying communities which I represent. So I'd say, watch what you're doing, I think it's very dangerous to set this precedent. Also, on a technical note, in the resolution itself, it says underneath phasing that this is covered by a tax increment finance district, which currently it is not, so by doing so and actually passing this resolution as drafted, you're actually producing something as a false document, and I think you'd be very worried about doing that. Additionally, to bring up concerns from the county that was brought up during the Minnehaw County Commissioners' meeting, when this was disclosed, was saying, what does this have to do for parks and schools? And the planning area says, well, we do identify there's a need for parks near it, but no provisions. So we're getting ready to shove a whole bunch of people with very expensive houses into very tight corridors, and give them no outlet. Is that the South Dakota we want to live in? I don't think so. Thank you.
Anyone else that should speak on this subject? Councillors, any question for staff? I get a motion.
Move of approval, Jensen.
Is there a second?
Second, Corus.
Moved in second, any discussion on that?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I guess, a question for Jason more than, does, does this say that we've already, that we're going to have to go ahead with the TIF process, or does it just state that that's the...
You guys are just approving a zoning change, that's it. It doesn't need a TIF for the zoning change. The developer could still do it without the TIF, so. The TIF and development agreement, that will come next.
Perfect. I guess that, then, my question then is for the city attorney, is that correct? I guess that, then, my question then is for the city attorney, is that correct?
Could you restate your question, please?
Um, is, is the phrasing correct in the, uh, resolution that we're passing that, uh, it's just that, to say that in the future we're going to potentially do a TIF, or that it says that it will be a TIF?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question, but I, I know it did receive legal review before it arrived on the agenda.
Anything else?
No, I'm done.
All right, can we get a vote, please?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg? Sale?
Yes. That is passed eight to nothing. Next item, please.
Item seventy-three is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending chapter one-sixty zoning subchapters one-sixty-point-zero-zero-five, one-sixty-point-one-oh-four, one-sixty-point-one-one-three, one-sixty-point-one-one-four, one-sixty-point-one-nine-four, one-sixty-point-two-sixty-two, one-sixty-point-four-oh-two, one-sixty-point-four-eighty, one-sixty-point-four-eighty-five, one-sixty-point-four-eighty-eight, one-sixty-point-five-one-seven, one-sixty-point-five-eighteen, one-sixty-point-five-five-one, one-sixty-point-five-seventy-two, one-sixty-point-five-seventy-three, one-sixty-point-five-seventy-four, one-sixty-point-five-seventy-five, one-sixty-point-five-ninety-one, one-sixty-point-five-ninety-eight, and one-sixty-point-six-seventy. The Planning Commission recommends approval eight to zero. Sponsors, the mayor.
Uh, these are zoning ordinance amendments, like indicated, we like to do every twelve to sixteen months. Uh, we'll go quickly through them because you guys have seen them twice now. Uh, just updating some definitions, uh, one of the big ones is allowing parking stalls, queuing spaces to be counted towards parking minimums. Um, as we kind of move into the new age, uh, parking becomes less and less and, and the need for it does. Um, we're looking to add the definition for solar farms. Um, MD three, this is one of the, the bulk regulations. Instead of, uh, the word adjacent, we were, we're looking to put, uh, ex, uh, a height limitation, but have it within a certain distance of single-family and townhomes, similar to the BCF three form. And then additional setbacks would obviously be required once they went, uh, higher in height. Uh, allowing residential on the second floor of an RE one zoning, we're seeing some of those reemergences of some of these neighborhood commercial uses. So we would like to, to see, uh, actually be on the second floor, actually have people live in up there. Like I indicated, putting, uh, stuff in there for solar farms for future, uh, use, trying to get ahead of it a little bit as we get into more renewable energy sources. Um, landscape standards, this is where we'd like to, uh, require fifty, or one tree for every fifty foot of frontage along our corridors, our highways, specifically Veterans Parkway. Currently, we don't have a standard for commercial and industrial to buffer to those highways. We'd like to provide, uh, with trees to kind of protect those corridors in the future, especially now that Veterans Parkway is going to become a reality. Um, and then giving us a little bit more, uh, flexibility with some of our buffer yard standards. This is an example of a project, uh, where the neighbors really wanted all evergreen trees instead of shrubs and things, so we worked with them, um, on getting those evergreen trees in there. This would allow the, uh, director to really do this administratively instead of having them go through Planning Commission and certain other, uh, approvals, as long as the neighbors and the, and the director agree with it, so.
Anyone wish to speak on this? Counselors' questions? Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve. Nightzert?
Second, Cole.
Move to approve by Nightzert, second by Cole. Is there an amendment, Mr. Nightzert?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to amend section one-sixty-point-five-nine-one-sub-I by striking two-point-seven and inserting three.
Second, Cole.
We have a motion to amend. Nightzert, second by Cole. Discussion, please.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, section one-sixty-five-nine-one covers off-premise signs, otherwise known as billboards. And I is a new section that would limit the size of the identification tag that is put on the billboard. So if you look at a billboard, it'll say something like Lamar or Book Your Billboard or Flynn Outdoor Advertising. Zoning had just picked the number two-point-seven percent to be the maximum size, just based on the measurements that they've done of sign, of, um, of recent signs. And just talking to the sign, um, the couple billboard companies here in town, they were just more comfortable with rounding a number to three and giving them just a little bit more play. And it's just more of a round number, so really minor change, so.
Other discussion?
Mr. Chair? I guess I have a-
Excuse me, Mr. Starr?
Yes, thank you. I guess my question is, why do we need to limit it at all? What are we trying to protect? I mean, it's, you know, if we're going to argue over two-point-seven or three in the square footage, why are we regulating it at all?
So, uh, good question. It's never come up before because, uh, typically, as we know, for the last twenty years, we had one billboard company in town that really had the control of the entire market. As we have kind of expanded and more billboard companies come to town, we've, we've struggled with, um, the size of their identification. So, you know, Lamar, Book Your Billboard, what their sign for the identification is on there. So what we did to get the two-point-seven percent, uh, was go back through what we've, uh, approved in the past, what the standard has been for the industry, and that's where we came up with that number. And just to make it standard across, so Lamar is the same as Book Your Billboard to this one, to any new companies that come into town. Um, nothing we're changing, that's what it's been for the last however long we've had billboards. We just never had a percentage on the books, to be honest with you.
But what are we protecting if we, if somebody came in and put a sign up to identify it and it was five percent of the sign?
You're present, you're preventing Lamar, Book Your Billboard for putting a ginormous of their name on a sign. That's what you're preventing on a billboard.
But it's, sorry to talk through this, but it's a ginormous sign to begin with.
Yeah, but they're allowed to do their section to kind of identify themselves. So if you don't limit it, they could probably do whatever they want it. Not that they have requested that, we're not saying that, but it just limits the size of the billboards and, and the signage on it.
I'm, I'm still back at the same thing. I don't know what we're protecting, why it would be a problem that the name of the company was bigger on the billboard versus a billboard that's an advertisement for another size of the company. So half the sign says Lamar and half the sign says-
But they're doing this on top of the size of the billboard.
It's usually on the bottom, isn't it?
Yep.
I mean, but if it went lower, I guess, whatever, I'm arguing about something.
Counselor Nightzert?
Doesn't matter, thank you. So that, that is my question, you know, they have a billboard sign allowance, so many square feet. That identification tag, does that count as part of that? Or could they literally do like a three-foot-high one hanging from below the sign?
We, we haven't counted that as part of the square footage for the billboard, and that's where we want to put this into effect, so it doesn't count. So we get a standard for what Lamar has done for thirty years, essentially. We wa, we allow them to do the, um, their names on them. It's, most of the time, it's on the structure, it's not on the billboard. But we wanted to get a standard for that because we've had some requests to do larger than that and we've asked them to do less. And they, and, and I'm not saying the billboard companies have argued with us, but we're just trying to get that standard in there.
Well, I think it's fine, but I think Counselor Starr has, does have a point. I mean, I, honestly, there's, it's going to be self-limiting simply because the company is not going to, the bigger they make their logo, it's going to detract from the advertising that they're trying to sell. I mean, so there's going to be something of their market, they're just going to be smart enough, they're not going to put probably a six-foot thing that says their company name when it's detracting from, you're selling the billboard advertising. But I, again, everybody's done two-point-seven, I'm asking for three, so.
More discussion? Seeing none, let's vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. The amendment passes eight to zero. Any discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes. That motion's passed eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item seventy-four is Audit Report twenty-one-oh-seven-three-forty-B Pharmacy Agreement. And item seventy-five is Audit Report twenty-one-oh-six Damage Recovery Billing.
Counsel, any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input in this portion will last no longer than three minutes per person. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that did not appear earlier in the regular agenda. I'd like to invite the public forward for general public input.
Hello, my name's Catherine Riffle again. I've been, uh, on the streets helping people, homeless, displaced, et cetera, for close to thirty years now. Um, I've been trying to change my, uh, retiring somewhat, but I also have a disabled son who's been through LifeScape. My son has been broken bones, been abused, he's been punished, he's been, uh, mentally, physically abused, et cetera. I had seen this happening, so I made sure that I had enough evidence. And I took my son out of LifeScape unexpectedly. I had had my papers notarized, I went to the certain places that were in concern. And lo and behold, through LifeScape came Benchmark. Benchmark decided that I am too old to be my son's mother and careperson. She contacted Social Security and had me taken off as his payee. I'm his payee, his natural mother, and his guardian, et cetera. Then it went from there, went to, uh, taxes. They audited me, everything's fine. Then it went to Medicare and Medicaid, they went back to two thousand seventeen, found a few dollars, decide to hit me with it this past month all at once, which is going to put a little damper on my rent, et cetera, et cetera. But I have good people around me, so they've held me up through it all. In the same suit, uh, the cops came, didn't know, back up. This woman came to my door demanding that I let her in, telling me she's so-and-so of the adult services. I refused to let her in, I don't know who she is, she did not show me ID, she did not show me a search warrant, she did not have anything with her in papers or police. I refused to let her in. So she threatened me that she would be back with the police. Okay, she come back with the police. The police came, there were seven of them altogether. And anyway, me, a seventy-five-year-old gal, uh, I'm being approached by all these officers who the city decided were going to come in and kidnap my son out from under me. Uh, this is not a happy little situation, I'm very upset about this. My son has been abused through them. Now Benchmark, again, had sent this woman back to my house. These officers are telling me that they have a right to come in my home. I do know that one officer has a right to come in my home. I said so, this other officer got mouthy with me, so I nicknamed him Mouth. I told him he's going to respect me at my home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. He didn't like doing that, so then he tried threatening me. Then he tried forcing me to have these people in my home. I did let the one officer in, and I did let the girl officer in. I told Mouth to stay by the door and I let the government check in. They could not find anything wrong with me, there was no discrepancies, no nothing, as well as SSI, who said they found no discrepancies or anything against me. It is my age. Can you believe that?
Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Michael Stangland, Sioux Falls citizen. I'm, uh, here tonight with a book recommendation, which normally might be an odd thing, but between the city council recently passing its yearly budget and someone else bringing in a pile of books a few weeks ago, maybe not so odd after all, though admittedly, I did not bring a copy for everyone, so apologies for that. The book I am recking tonight, re, recommending tonight is Basic Economics by Dr. Thomas Sewell, brilliant man, probably one of the smartest in America, if not the world. While the title is accurate, it is also a bit deceptive in terms of the value of the contents. The definition the book uses for economics is the study of the use of limited resources which have alternative uses, which ultimately means that economics covers every aspect of our lives. For example, all of us here only have so much time. We could theoretically be spending that time in alternate ways. So all of us are, in fact, dedicating our own personal time economy to this particular city, Sioux Falls City Council meeting right now. Now, why I'm here to recommend this book is because, among the topics it covers, is matters of government decision-making, especially as it pertains to a long history of various leaders making decisions that sound good in theory but bring about an opposite outcome. How oftentimes, it is those, it is those who such policies are intended to help who are hurt the most by the consequences. As I presume that all of you have the best interests of Sioux Falls at heart and want this city to be the best it can be, and as Sioux Falls faces new challenges and as it continues to grow, I'm recommending that you all find a copy of Basic Economics to read, whether buying one for yourself, maybe borrowing a copy from the Sioux Falls Library, maybe even buy a copy that you can share with someone else, maybe read it and then, you know, lend it out to someone else who can read it as well. And I say this not just for you, but also for everyone who else who happens to be here, um, as, as well as those who, you know, may be watching on TV or may be watching online later. And I say this because, and I, I say this recognizing full well that the city council doesn't touch matters of school curriculum, so it's just for emphasis. I genuinely believe that if Basic Economics was one of those books that was required reading in high school, it would go a long way towards, you know, fixing a lot of the problems currently plaguing our society. So thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input?
Hi, my name is Veronica Stow-Lion, and I wasn't there for the situation that Catherine Riffle brought up, but my daughter was. The last time seven officers were in a one-blocked area, it was for a suicidal meth dealer with a gun. And now my daughter views those two situations the same. And they're not. And the city needs to look at how they treat state workers when they come to do a welfare check, because it's, well, it should be handled far differently than meth dealers. Thank you.
Anyone else for public input tonight? Seeing none, before I ask for adjournment, I have two announcements to make. The first one is I'd like to remind everyone that the meeting originally scheduled for Tuesday, October eighteenth, will actually be held on Monday, October tw, seventeenth, two-zero-twenty-two. And lastly, there are three birthdays I'd like to bring attention to.